Good evening. Is anyone here? All right, good evening one and all. Let's take seats. Please feel free to grab chairs off the racks in the back or better yet, fill in the front row. There's a prize under one of the front row seats for the person who sits there. Good evening once again and welcome to this regular edition of the Planning Commission at a special location here. Please be down here, see the folks down here and enjoy the beautiful drive down. This meeting is dedicated to one subject we'll be talking about, the draft EIR, the cannabis program. With this being a regular meeting, we'll proceed with our normal agenda. Order, so we have been called to order and begun the meeting. We will now have public comment. This public comment period is for where members of the public may address the Planning Commission on any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda, but is within the purview of the Planning Commission. We're going to have probably an extended public comment period for tonight's agenda item. So this is for items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to come up? Press the phone.
Good evening. Is it working? Can you hear me? Good evening commissioners and staff and consultants and legal and everybody who's trying to do heavy lifting on this project. Thank you for coming. I just wanted to comment on something that's not on the agenda and that would be the development of a Class K housing ordinance. Many speakers have requested this for many months, many, many months. And it's such an important thing for Trinity County and especially Haybork and South County. I think it's appropriate to once again ask for a speedier means of coming up with a Class K ordinance. I think two commissioners have already put a lot of work into a draft. I know other counties have Class K ordinances that seem to work pretty well. Seems like it could be a good fit here. And I don't think we can wait to include it as part of the general plan update. So I'd just like to encourage commissioners and staff to please prioritize the development and implementation of a Class K ordinance here in Trinity. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can you turn off the mic? Perfect.
Turned off, did somebody say? No, I missed the word. What was the operative word? Oh, it was, okay. How much time is left?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Three, three minutes.
Three minutes. Do you want me to know how long it's been?
Yes, yes.
My name's Peter Dogg. I live on Post Mountain, on the number Post Mountain Public Utility District. What I want to talk about is almost nothing at all. I'm going to spend my time learning, doing the two things that I learned really in Quaker High School. And those two things were silence and nonviolent. So I'm taking my time to devote to, you know, an effort that we can all come to an conclusion that's beneficial to everyone. One minute, two minutes. That's your three minutes, sir. Thank you very much. One thing we often do at these meetings is ask if they are going to reiterate some things that have already been stated or presented, that you, that do that. If something after a couple of folks say the same things over and over, it gets a little bit done for everybody and we've gotten the point. So if anyone wants to repeat the last presentation, please spare us.
I don't know if I need it. Yeah, you do. All right. You know, it's almost nowhere to really face, you know? It's kind of awkward. Then you got to put up here. So my name's Justin Hawkins, I'm from Haybork. And just to touch quickly on the Class K housing option, that's that owner-built housing that allows to build their own houses with our own hands and they'll live in them in Trinity County. To me, it sort of represents like the geese of Trinity. You can go and do it on your own and homestead your land. And I think it's super important for everybody, especially in a community brought with a lot of fires. Really hard to get contractors in Trinity County. And frankly, there are opinions that have to deal with, so a lot of times you bear off building yourself. And there's a lot of people in this county, hundreds if not thousands of people in this county that need this. So I wouldn't even just ask the commissioners, because they actually got it together. We voted on one last year, but for some reason it never went up to the Board of Supervisors. And I don't know if it got blocked by the former director of planning or was blocked by the chair of the Board of Supervisors, but I would suggest that we all talk to our own personal supervisors and push this forward. The other thing I want to mention is cannabis variances. I'd like to see cannabis variances end up on the Planning Commission's agenda. Because cannabis variances currently are renewed annually. And well frankly, if you read the language, allow your neighbors to complain about you and force your variance to be reheard, and that's just because you're not getting along with your neighbor. You're out of compliance with your neighbor, not the regulations in Trinity County. So it's like extortion. I know of two situations in this county where people in force pay money from their neighbor for such privileges. And if you move in by the house next to your neighbor, you could actually raise the price of the extortion racket. So that's moved back on in Trinity County and I hope that the commission can agendaize that in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone?
All right, good evening everybody. My name's Dan DeBudian. I'm from Valley of Plenty, LLC. I recently got a Type 7 manufacturing license in the county. And I want to take the time to talk to the planning commissioners about addressing the tax situation in this county. I think that we don't need to punish the 300 good actors.
That's how it actually works for the planning commission.
Well...
300 are taxed.
You guys can't agendaize an ordinance that deals with the taxing, taxing this in any way?
That is so curvy of the Board of Supervisors. We are not a legislative body. Anything else?
No.
If you're... Anybody else?
You try, Dan, you try.
Yeah, and a hundred dollars a day is like...
They did 6,000 a piece, man, what the hell? How much more does that guy want?
Hi, I'm Beth, I'm from Barker Valley. And I want to address the dual issue. You folks have approved a thousand plant grow. Using, in the same kind of cannabis policy council, Emerald Growers Association, they use the acronym of 111. One plant, one gallon, one pound. Now, there's nobody out there growing like depth and greenhouse and outdoor rows that only get a pound, they're getting two or five gallons. So let's go with native acre, 50 feet, 100 feet, 50 plants, 34,000 gallons per season. Now, you make that 1,000 plants, it's 480,000 gallons. Per season, not counting the house, not counting the help, you're talking over a half a million gallons of water. And you have residents who have places that should be credit for their new, multiple. You put a 10 acre, one residence, law in, that uses 100,000, 144,000 per family of four. And you told us no on using our other residences. I have 1,800 miners' gallons that's continued issues and the original hunters did. I was sold literally top walk. Now, I wouldn't have anywhere near over a half a million gallons. And you told us it was because there wasn't enough water. But there's enough water for plants, but not people. Second, your shotgun factor, the environmental studies as far as archaeological?
Excuse me, this, you will have a chance to make this point, but you're into an area where of the EIR, which we will be discussing a little bit later. So this period is for subjects that are not into EIR.
Okay. Do you have dogs in your EIR to live in now, whatever it is?
Yes, you can ask us if EIR addresses it, that comes up on your EIR.
Okay, well then I'll be back.
That's great, appreciate it.
I had tried to say, too many dogs for coyotes to live in. And don't let the coyote move on.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chair, I'm the Commissioner. As you're guarding now, just kidding. Tom Olango, Douglas City. As some of you probably are aware, there's a circulating petition for a tax, square footage tax on cannabis. So some of us were compelled to put a competing initiative for a different kind of tax, tax on the production end, rather than another barrier to entry kind of tax. I just wanted to acknowledge all the work that the commission has done, because since I ended up writing the thing, I figured I'm not going to stop with just redoing the tax. Why not shake the edgesh sketch and really streamline the process? There's no other land use that has Miami flipped it on them every year. Gas stations don't, a slaughterhouse if we had one, wouldn't, a lumber mill doesn't. Everybody's fine with going through planning one time like CUP. So we put that in. I took the zones exactly how they were created by this commission in hearings like this. I do want to acknowledge the work the commission has done to really be a mirror for Trinity County. I think it made it very easy for me to put together an initiative like that. It'll be released next week when the Alex Haibon summary gets done. And since I've gone through the trouble of writing an initiative, doing the research and all that stuff, figured why not do two initiatives? So there's going to be an alternative building code, which again, this commission's done tremendous work on that. I just took basically all the work this commission's done and put it in an initiative format. So that'll be next week circulated too. So just wanted to acknowledge your work. Of course, it's not done, it might even be exciting, but thanks for everything so far.
Anybody else? All right, let's close public comment. I have my public.
Thank you. Thank you one and all. Back to our regularly scheduled programming. The first item under the calendar would be the minutes and there are none to be approved. That will bring us to the item of tonight's agenda. Before we go into that, I think Director Hunter would like to do some introductions of all of the players who are here tonight. Please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. We really appreciate you being here. My name is Kim Lenter. I'm the Planning and Building Director and I'd just like to introduce the staff. Starting at the end of the table, we have Ben Morales. He is a co-compliance specialist and building instructor. Leslie Hubbard, she's Deputy Director of Planning. Mary Beth Franklin, Environmental Coordinator. Derek Cole, outside jungle counselor for CEQA. Jada Kolbeck, Environmental Compliance Specialist. Pat Angel, Senior Director with Ascent Environmental. And to my right, Bella Headkey, Associate Planner. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hunter. So let's move on to item number two on our agenda. This is the Trinity County Draft Environmental Impact Report for the Trinity County Cannabis Program. And the purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing to receive feedback in response to the draft EIR, which has been prepared for the county's commercial cannabis licensing program. This is a county-wide project. The way we're going to do this is we're going to do a presentation from the county, from staff, excuse me, on the items specifically that they have received in terms of public feedback and their view on those items. And then we'll ask questions and clarifications from the commission of the staff and the EIR consultant. And then we will all end up the public comment on the seven items and the fact, anything in the air, you'd like to talk about at that point. We'll also have the three-minute time to write during that period, so please be concise. Director Hunter, staff, it's up to you to present.
Okay. I am terribly sorry about that. Good evening, Commission and the public. Again, my name's Pat Angel. I am the Project Manager for the CIR, seeing any of you at some of the workshops we've had. I have a brief presentation, some of which you may have seen before in previous... Can I still be heard? Okay, thank you. That you've seen before at some workshops, but there is some additional new information in this presentation. So the discussion points, it's provided an overview of the environmental review process to date, talked about the initial content of the draft EIR, identify the key environmental issues we received. Again, there's no action to be taken tonight. This is simply to vet up further information in the EIR, talk about those key issues, our initial input on it, and talk about steps moving forward for both the EIR as well as the cannabis program. So really quick, Ascent Environmental was retained by the county to be a third-party, independent review of potential environmental effects of future implementation of the cannabis program. We've done multiple cannabis projects in our time. We're currently working on, we've worked on four different EIRs for cannabis ordinance programs in counties, so we do come with some experience. Very quick on the overview of what the cannabis program is, while there's obviously a lot of focus on cultivation, it's important to note that the program also includes ordinances associated with testing, nursery distribution, manufacturing, non-starfront retail and microbusinesses. So oftentimes you'll see it referenced as the non-cultivation uses associated with cannabis. So what is CEQA? Again, some of you have seen this show before. It's a public disclosure process where we disclose the potential environmental effects of an action. The intent of CEQA is to provide an opportunity for public and agencies to provide input in the process. It's essential to it, it helps improve the process. It's also a key to avoid and minimize environmental impacts that are identified. Completion of the environmental review process, which is in this case known as certification EIR, doesn't mean a project gets approved. It just means you've completed that disclosure process and now you have the information necessary to act, because you now have the information on the environmental issues associated with the project. It's a, I can multitask. So in EIR, it's a rather thick document, as I've heard from a few people from the public. It's an informational document. It discloses the environmental effects. It identifies mitigation measures as well as alternatives to avoid or minimize those effects. And again, as I mentioned before, it does provide an opportunity to have public and agency input on the adequacy of it and the content of it. Again, the EIR must be certified before any action is done on cannabis program. You have to complete the environmental review process under CEQA before you can take action to approve or modify a project. So really briefly, what an EIR does is, I've said this for like a third time now, is it analyzes the environmental effects, it discloses that information, identifies mitigation measures and alternatives, it solicits for public and agency input to improve the process. What's important to be aware of is what the EIR doesn't do. It doesn't require mitigation pre-existing environmental conditions, and that's a topic to talk about later. Doesn't advocate for the project under evaluation. It doesn't require that you deny a project because there's significant environmental issues. There are findings that can be made where you can outweigh, you can weigh the economic or social benefits of your project versus the environmental effects that are disclosed. It also doesn't address things that are purely economic or social issues, such as I'm worried about my property values. I'm not suggesting that isn't an important issue to be deliberated upon, but it's not something that CEQA gets into. CEQA is solely about the physical environment. So this is an overview of the CEQA process. We right now are at the, it would be the third box from the bottom to the right. The final EIR, response to comments stage. We have completed the draft EIR, we've completed the 45-day review period. We are now in the process of preparing the final EIR and looking at the comments we received during the 45-day review period. The next step in the process would be completion of that final EIR and moving forward into the deliberation process by you, the commission, and whatever recommendation you make that goes before the board, which may be approval of the program as it stands in certification, it may be go back to the drawing board on both, it may be some variation in between. But that would be the next step in the process. So this EIR's focus is on the entirety of implementing the cannabis program. The term programmatic is thrown around a lot and what that means is it's a county-wide review of what could the environmental effects of future cannabis uses be, cultivation and non-cultivation? And I'll talk a bit more about that in regards to when we talk about assumptions and forecasting of what the future may look in regards to cannabis activities. This EIR doesn't look at every specific individual parcel that may have a cannabis use. It also provides an opportunity for you to streamline your environmental review should you adopt the cannabis program and certify the EIR. It provides environmental coverage that may avoid the need for doing subsequent environmental review for individual applications or may greatly shorten that process. It does include considerations of things that the state agencies may permit and require, though they may have additional requirements on top of the environmental review process here. It's kind of a case-by-case circumstance that gets evaluated. So this is an overview of the environmental topics of draft EIR we looked at. And at the end of this, I'm happy to go back to each slide should the commission or the public be interested in looking at further, by the way. These were the alternatives that were looked at, everything from maintaining the existing ordinance as it stands to variations based on trying to address environmental issues identified. The comment period on the draft EIR closed back in July 12th. We received a total of 50 comment letters. Three of them were from public agencies, two of them from a single public interest group, and then we received 45 comment letters that were from the public or private organizations or similar sort of interests. The final EIR, as I mentioned before, is currently under preparation responding to these comments received. What I'm going to do is go over kind of these key items that were a common theme in comments we received. And one was questions, concerns about the baseline of the environmental analysis. And what the baseline is, is basically the starting point of what's your existing environmental condition that the EIR starts with and determine when you add the project on top of, is there an impact, is there not an impact? And there were some questions, concerns about the adequacy of that, as well as whether or not illegal cultivation was adequately considered in that. The response that we provided in the staff report that I have somewhere right here is the analysis is consistent with CEQA requirements. The CEQA says normally your baseline starts at the point you release your notice of preparation, and in this case, that was December of 2018. The EIR identifies that the first licensing of the cannabis program started in 2016 and identified as of the December of 2018, I'm trying to remember how many, it was 286 licenses, I think, had been issued at that point. So that was our starting point for the analysis. However, we do, where there was updated information that was available for us, they used after that point that approved the analysis, we used. The analysis also did include estimates that the county had, as well as mapping on the extent of illegal cultivation. Whoops, I went the wrong way. So there was quite a few comments in regards to consideration of illegal cannabis cultivation. And there were concerns that the analysis didn't disclose there was illegal cultivation and its environmental effects, both in the project-level analysis as well as the larger cumulative regional sort of analysis, and that illegal cultivation should be stressed as part of the program and mitigated for. The response that we provided and was described in the EIR is we do describe that illegal cultivation is part of the baseline condition, but the project is your licensing program. It is not the continuation of existing cultivation that is out, you're not issuing any sort of actions associated with that unless one of those were supposedly come into the program and then they would be covered by the analysis. CEQA does not require you to address mitigate illegal activities that are separate from your project. That's part of the existing condition and there's case law that has been established that bolsters that position. Noise, there were several comments expressed by noise. I think the number one comment we got overall was concerns about barking dogs that apparently are being used by, for security purposes. What we identified was is there's government, there's county code provisions in regards to dealing with noise nuisance issues with animals, which includes dogs and how that is handled and how there's enforcement mechanisms that already exist. The cannabis ordinance also includes requirements that cannabis operations be consistent with the county's noise standards in the general plan. Odors associated with cannabis cultivation, we got comments on both sides of this issue. Some people concerned about being exposed to the odor, saying they're exposed to it now that it's an issue to them, and some feeling that the analysis overstated the extent of the potential impact. The EIR talks about the science behind odor analysis, that it's something that certainly can be quantified, but it comes down to a perception issue to the individual person, their ability to detect the smell and frankly, their disposition to something like cannabis, for example. It's done as a qualitative analysis, programmatically we looked at it county-wide. We don't know exactly where new cannabis uses are going to be, exactly their proximity to population centers, but we made some estimates and we made some determinations based on that. Most of the data that's out there right now about controlling odor through cannabis is focused on indoor operations or anything within a building where you can use a filtration system as part of your ventilation system. Outdoor is a little more problematic during the harvest season, depending on how close your sensitive receptors may be. There were traffic concerns, both in regards to the number of cars that may be on the road associated with cannabis operations, people's observations of them going up and down the roads, as well as perceived issues with damage to roadways associated with cannabis uses suggesting that large vehicles are being used. The analysis uses some pretty conservative determinations of how many employees and seasonal employees... seasonal employees may be on sites as well as the non-cultivation uses, and assumes they all end up on the same road, basically out of the roadway system at the same time during the peak harvest. So it's kind of the worst-case scenario you could have. And identifies that you could have some operational impacts to State Route 3 and 299. Again, that means all these uses are happening at the same time of year, full tilt, and they're all hitting the road. So it's a very conservative determination. Draft EIR also has mitigation measures to ensure that driveways are designed consistent with county standards, that your fire access is adequate and meeting the appropriate standards. There was some, there were some comments that stated that really the CIR was unnecessary, that we just simply rely on the Cal Cannabis EIR, which is the state licensing program. The Cal Cannabis EIR, for just a little bit of background, is what the state certified as part of establishing the state regulations and their process for the state program. It was covering their statewide program. It does not cover, it's not intended to cover individual counties and their own individual sort of programs. It certainly provides standards in which you can make use of developing your own program and factoring in regards to that they address some environmental issues already, but it's not a complete coverage of the issue. Cal Cannabis and the staff involved with that actually recommend that a local agency's going to develop their own ordinance. They recommend doing something like a program EIR to make the process easier for application processing, and they provide some guidance recently as we released on that. Quite a few comments on EIR assumptions, feeling that the EIR assumptions may have overstated potential impacts. Draft EIR, again, is a programmatic analysis. It's our view into the future using the best available public information that we can get our hands on during the timeframe we are working on the EIR. It was review of the licensing information we had available to county. It was review of other jurisdictions that have cannabis uses and pulling that together and developing up a series of assumptions. We certainly acknowledge that, yeah, they are conservative. In some cases, as part of comments we received on the draft EIR, we received some excellent input that we acknowledge we overstated some impacts, and there's some adjustments that we need to make to the EIR as you actually acknowledge the impact is not as great as what was disclosed, and we're working through that process as part of the final EIR. One last point that's not in the presentation that I wanted to make mention of, because there's been a couple of conversations at some of the workshops about the fact that EIRs, or this EIR in particular, but EIRs in general, they come off as negative documents, kind of a negative connotation, because all it focuses on is impacts, because that's the function of how CEQA works. It certainly is possible as part of the final EIR process, there's no, even CEQA says you can't have a discussion about the beneficial aspects of a project, or the beneficial aspects of the fact of a regulated cannabis program, cannabis program that brings illegals into legal and gets them, have them going to the state program has benefits, and certainly that could be added as part of the final EIR, and there would be no issues with the CEQA process in regards to that, should the county be interested with that. So I'm available for answering any questions, and thank you for your time.
Commissioner? Commissioner? Turn me up.
No, it turned on.
Is that a little green light mean it's on?
Well, it's current there.
Hello there. Hello, that's a little...
It is.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Pat. Commissioner, if you've got any questions, any of the illustrious staff over there regarding this presentation, the seven items, or really since the, I didn't limit it to the seven items, I'm anything in there. Please.
Do you want them one at a time, or should I just go through them all? Okay. I've had a number of people stop me on the street. They called me, they stopped me after meetings, and they have said that in their opinion, this document is fundamentally flawed in its assumptions and conclusions, and that it needs to be rewritten totally. I don't know enough about CEQA and CEQA law to speak to that, but I can ask why, judging from the combined meeting that we have with the board supervisors and the planning commission, it seems as though there wasn't enough effort made to obtain current relevant and verifiable data from everybody possible within the county, such as the watershed center, and even consultants would have some information that could be relevant to the CEQA document. Can you speak to that?
Okay. Thank you for that input. As I mentioned in my presentation, we did use publicly available information. We did go and look at the application materials the county had available. We were also working under a schedule that was trying to get originally the process of this being done by July, so we were using the best available information we had. I would not call the document fundamentally flawed. The key aspect of CEQA is are your conclusions and your data based on substantial evidence? The material that the EIR analysis is based on is substantial evidence. Could it be improved? Absolutely. There's no question about that. The better the local data we get, the better the analysis can be, and that certainly is a step you can do between the draft and the final EIR.
And Commissioner Stewart, I would add, excuse me. CEQA works with the concept of threshold of significance, and so when you look at a specific type of impact, the consultant looks at the threshold of significance, and the consultant compares the baseline, which Mr. Angel talked about, and then identifies the impacts, and then assesses, do those impacts go beyond the threshold of significance? And so my response to your, the comments you're receiving from the public would be to direct those individuals to go back and read the EIR, because this EIR, I think, does an excellent job of outlining for each impact the thresholds of significance and how the threshold of significance was determined, which is something that is developed in the field. In other words, environmental professionals like our consultants, like other consultants, there's a whole body of work that they rely on now. CEQA is in, I think, it's almost 50th year, and they are relying on bodies of work, professional work, and sources that define these thresholds of significance, whether it's odor, traffic impacts, biological impacts, impacts to watersheds. And so I think maybe members of the public who are reading an EIR for the first time, who have maybe never read EIR or gone through the process, are coming into something that has its own methodology and its own sources and its own built-up institutional knowledge. And so maybe they're not familiar, but, and this is a big deal, that's why CEQA has a public process, and that's why we're doing things like we're doing here tonight, is because the consultants can only access so much information that's actually available in published resources or online or in books or studies that they may have on their shelves. But that's why we have this process. And so if there are consultants who are working here, then I hope they've submitted letters, and if they haven't, I hope that they will provide comment, whether it's tonight, before the board, or when we actually do the formal hearings, because that's the whole idea behind the public process, is to recognize that staff and the consultants may not get everything, and so let's put it out to the public.
Some of them are here tonight. I'm sure some of them will be addressing.
And that would be most of them.
Another question. How did the fact, and I wrote these down because I wanted to remember them, so excuse me if I'm half-reading and half-not. How did the fact that approximately three-quarters of the county is publicly owned as opposed to privately owned land, which obviously precludes cannabis cultivation completely on that land figure into your document, especially in the area of sensitive watersheds, since at least some of the land in those sensitive watersheds is not privately held? And so how does that figure especially into your cumulative impacts, given that there are often large tracts of land between communities and even neighbors that are not privately held, that cannot have legal cannabis, licensed cannabis farms on? How is that factored into your results?
I understand your question, and again, thank you for the question. The EIR has a rather substantial amount of information on public versus private holdings. It acknowledges the forest land and acknowledges that nothing can be licensed out there, and that provides safeguards of the sort of habitat conditions. So all of that is acknowledged. The cumulative analysis also acknowledges all the forest management activities that the forest, that the various, the various US forest entities are implementing in these individual forest land areas. So all of that is factored. If we want to get into the details, I could certainly delve into the EIR and show you some examples.
That's, that's, I don't like. I'm sorry. I, as I went through it, I did not notice, of course, I did not read it, I've read them all, you know, 8,000 pages of it, but I did not notice any references to that, and so that prompted my question. Also regarding cumulative impacts, Tredite County is comprised of approximately 3,208 square miles, which equals, I believe, 2,053,120 acres of land. As the program, at the program limit of 530 licenses, even if all license holders were upgraded to one-acre grow sites, that would be 530 acres out of 2,053,120, and that seems fairly insignificant. How was that factored into your results?
How about Seattle Pacific's clear cuts? How does that factor out?
The analysis focused on, again, programmatically, we don't know exactly where future sets were going to go. So we took some, we took some reasonable assumptions of where that would go and where there might be sensitive habitat in areas in which could go into cultivation, so we analyzed it that, in that sort of manner. You are correct, we are talking about a rather small percentage. We're also going off of our experiences with cowfish and wildlife and other jurisdictions with some of the habitat conditions and what sort of resources they have concerns about, such as northern spotted owl, which are very abundant in this county and in the region, though a sensitive species.
Thank you. And then the last one.
Commissioner, can I add to that concept? I understand where that comment is going, but I would point out that if there are 530 cannabis sites, even at one acre, they're using water. And so, and several of them might be in one watershed. And so it's possible that if they're all using their maximum amount of water for their cannabis site in one watershed, even though it might be 10 or 20 of them, they might complete that watershed. So I think it's, I would refer to that as the fallacy of division, where we take something and try to make it smaller than it really is. It's very possible that you could have 500 acres that cause significant impacts. Imagine a cement plant. A cement plant could be in a half-acre, but yet it releases all kinds of material, of gases into the air. So I would caution that level of thinking, because another, another point is parking, or not parking, a truck. So it may be that you have a couple of grow sites all using one private growth system, and that growth system will deteriorate because there are, you know, trucks that are going back and forth to deliver soil, to take products to manufacturing facilities, and workers coming back and forth. So I would just say that I understand where people are going with that argument, but it really doesn't work from an actual standpoint in terms of what environmental impacts could be.
Thank you. My last question, you actually answered when you talked about positive impacts, because I was going to ask about why there was not a fifth alternative, given the fact that there are advantages to having licensed cultivation sites as opposed to unlicensed cultivation sites? And you answered that, that it was certainly a possibility to include that. Thank you.
Commissioner, anybody else? Questions for staff?
I do have a couple of questions. I do want to appreciate all the effort put forth. I'm sure it has been many hours, so thank you. With that said, I do have a couple of questions. First of, why were initial mitigation measures that had been previously addressed, the requirements of Department of Fish and Wildlife, North Course Regional Water Board, local ordinances, which include set max residence, opt-out zones, permanent residence requirements, among others, not included in the project description? And yet these were reiterated on the back end as mitigation measures? Why were these not presented beforehand as an effort that, and, you know, as a show that some of these items aren't yet mitigated currently?
Again, thank you. There's just something special about me tonight, I'm sorry. Again, thank you for the comment. Certainly in the project description, we outlined that the content of each of the ordinances and the performance standards that provide environmental protection, each of the technical sections of the EIR had a, I don't know what's called the name of the computer. Okay, let's try this a little better. The technical sections of the EIR, they have what's called a regulatory framework, or regulatory setting, I'm sorry, that identifies all of these things, such as the state water board's order and the various terms that come into play. The EIR acknowledges that information and then identifies if there's any shortcomings. For example, the state water board order, yes, it's excellent, it does a lot of great protective measures for cultivation activities. Doesn't cover non-cultivation, only covers cultivation. So in some cases where we saw a hole, so to speak, we would fill it, but oftentimes, compliance of state water board is getting pretty close there, so we wanted to have mitigation measures that combine with that and not establish a brand-new process, because that's just burdensome for staff as well as the licensee. I hope that answers your question. I could certainly get into the weeds if you wish to. Sorry, I may get that to that. Exactly what Pat said, the state water board order is sufficient in terms of the protections that it offers, but this EIR, I would say, would be remiss if it didn't point to that very directly and specifically. For example, in the biological section, the state general order doesn't say anything about tree bolts. But if we didn't mention tree bolts, then we wouldn't be disclosing it to the decision-makers that we said we don't get tree bolts. So there's a number of specific mitigations in there that point to the state general order, but in a very specific way.
I do have another question. Considering the very unique rural circumstantial environment of Tredite County, do you consider all the mitigation measures presented in the documents substantially feasible?
We consider them feasible on a technical standpoint. Ultimately, the determination of feasibility, which starts to factor in things like economics and social items, and Garrett may have some further elaboration on this, ultimately falls into you as decision-makers making a recommendation to the finding commission, ultimately to the board of supervisors. There are circumstances where a consultant like myself will recommend mitigation measures and decision-making body will make a different, will make a different interpretation. As long as they have evidence to prove, to prove why they disagree, that's completely allowable. In the end, this is your document.
And that's, sorry, that's part of why we have this process. You know, one of the things that when a consultant, as I described earlier, there's a whole body of work that the consultants have available to them, but that's a body of work that is created by professionals like them and added to over time, but that doesn't always take into account the unique knowledge of the community in which the project is taking place. And so here we have a county-wide project... And so here we have a county-wide project, and we have a whole host of people who are familiar with this, with what the conditions are and what the industry needs and what, what, generally what's best. That's why we have a public process. And so ultimately, the board and the planning commission can determine certain mitigation measures are not feasible after listening to the public and hearing what the public has to say. So that's why we have a public process.
If I may, real quick. It's strongly encouraged looking at the language of the mitigation specifically, because there's going to be situations where it says, "We're feasible," or "we're appropriate," or "may do this" rather than "shall." So the language and how it was written speaks directly to the feasibility of the mitigation itself. There's also another component of how often that mitigation would actually be applied. There's a number of situations where mitigation is speaking to a very specific situation that would not commonly be encountered, yet needs to be addressed and disclosed to the decision makers. So if you look at the list of mitigations and sort of piece them apart, I would suggest that, yes, on a whole, they are feasible, but the ability to change them does rest with your recommendations.
Yeah, one more.
It might, that we have had the discussion previously of stacking of licenses. Then why, I'm just curious, why was this not considered? Or echoing what Commissioner Stewart said, why the consideration of increasing the amount of licenses was not considered either? Many of us believe, or many of us, many of the public believe, and I have heard these comments before, that the tool for mitigation is actually the encouragement of enrollment and not creating further burdens and mitigations. So can you speak to that, please? Thank you for your time again.
I'm going to take a stab at this unless somebody else would like to speak up to it. I may actually ask you to say that again. There are several questions in there. The first one was on stacking, and I'm going to try to get the balance just right. So when this process began with the notice of preparation, in fact, Mr. Angel mentioned when that first came out, we were in a position of a deadline that was coming up for the state compliance with CECL that was July. It's a very fast timeline for an EIR, for a document like this to be put together. It's incredibly fast. So we had to make certain decisions, essentially draw a line at the stand is one way to say it. It's like, after this point, we cannot include anything else in the project description. Because if we did, then it changes the analysis significantly. And we would have to go back to modeling, go back to several reiterations that would honestly make that timeline incredibly unfeasible. So we were in a position of needing to make some tough decisions. Designated area was included, stacking was not. At the time that we were looking at that, stacking was being considered with an upcoming ordinance, but it wasn't there yet. And so we couldn't put ourselves in a position of an ongoing political conversation, basically, about the drafting, adoption of a new ordinance or new amendment. We needed to have a project description. It really came down to that. We needed to have something to work with. We understood at the end of that process, there was always the potential for an addendum or a supplement to this EIR to be certified, that it can include any of those additions. That is still on the table, that is still potentially moving forward. If there's any suggestions for an alternate to this ordinance, that's, we have to engage this document, I guess is one way to put it. So again, the project description was built basically off our timeline and our ability to meet that timeline. The idea of increasing the number of licenses, which I believe was the other component of your question, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, is a great question, and it's one that's going to come up quite often, I'm certain, and it's a good, it's a good conversation to have. But understand, that did not exist in the ordinance at the time. We felt like the ordinance at the time is what the project was, what it had been, and what we had to work with. And so while we felt we had a little flexibility in order to suggest alternatives, such as designated area increasing, going out to increasing the cap went against what the ordinance had said all along and how it had been, I wouldn't say generally perceived, but just how it had operated in practice. We were trying to get this EIR to match generally what was in practice.
So basically, you're, sorry about that. Basically, you're saying that any change to the current ordinance will require an addendum to the existing, to the EIR, once it's certified?
Couple of things, let's take a step backwards. So right now. I can talk really loud, let's try that. We actually should stand outside. Right now, in this current position, we don't have a certified EIR. So should you decide to change the ordinance, it's kind of like, well, it depends how much you change it. In a sense, the EIR analysis is set a set of bookends. And if you play around with those bookends, then really, the EIR can keep moving forward. If you go outside those bookends, and it's hard to give you examples without talking specifically about changes in the ordinance, then we start running an issue, well, maybe we need to recirculate a portion of the EIR for another 45-day review period to address that change. Now, after the EIR is certified and you want to make a change, then the environmental review process question kind of changes. It's like, okay, you now want to do why? Does that cause an environmental impact that's different than the EIR that's already certified? You don't go back to the beginning, you look back to your previous analysis. So it's actually a shortened process. And it can be sometimes an addendum, which is a very, it's almost just a paper process. There is no public review, there is no, it's pretty simple to possibly a subsequent or supplementary IR or an egg deck. I mean, there's a range of options. Again, it all depends on where the ordinance goes from today and where we are in the process of the environmental review. I hope that makes sense.
It did, thank you.
Actually, man, I should just stand here if you have any more questions, so I don't cause any feedback again.
I have one question. It was sort of touched on by Commissioner Horne. Are the mitigations and performance standards in the existing program reflected in the EIR as logical performance standards and mitigation measures going forward? He mentioned too, for example, setbacks and opt outs. Would the draft EIR, in the context of the existing program, support continuing all of the various performance standards and mitigation measures that are in the current program?
The short answer to that is yes.
I like that answer, okay. So Commissioner, any other questions for staff? Last chance for you. So I've got a recap. Very good. This update to the EIR was addressing, was this presentation, showing the feedback of seven issues that were captured in public input. The baseline used in the draft EIR, addressing illegal cannabis cultivation, noise concerns, odor concerns, traffic concerns, tearing off of Cal cannabis EIR, and EIR analysis assumptions. So if you have any specific input on those items, that would be great fodder for public comment. However, if you have any comments on the EIR in total, that's also perfectly fine as well. We're going to do the three-minute thing, and at this point, I would like to open up to public comment. Please step forward, and if you care to, identify yourself, where you're from. That's optional, and then tell us what you have to say.
Just you stand away from the speaker.
Yeah, we're going to try, yeah, please don't stand in front of those speakers. And apologize for the awkwardness of the sound system. We are trying.
Okay, hi, Jeff DeGalezini. Just to address something really quick, I would consider myself an expert cannabis grower. I've been doing it 18 years. I've been doing it in Trinity for eight, I think. To what I learned how to do in college, it's a large reason why Greg would call about debt. I just want to say something that Mr. Angel addressed just a second ago about, about that they couldn't, they couldn't make recommendations that aren't in the ordinance when they just, the environmentally superior alternative on page 525 says that everything should be placed in buildings with odor control. You can't do that under the current ordinance. That's called indoor cannabis. It's a different license type. It's not outdoor, it's not greenhouse, it's indoor. And then, as far as water goes, my professors in college wouldn't allow me to cite myself on previous papers I'd written. You know, they just, they just didn't let me do that. But here, page 3.10-35, and then this is all over the EIR, they cite themselves. They cite themselves, they cite their Humboldt County draft EIR repeatedly. I don't know where they pulled these numbers from originally, but I'm guessing, I just don't know where they got them from, because they're citing themselves all over the place. 17.4 gallons per day, per square foot, is what cannabis needs. Right here, 17.4 gallons per day, per square foot, all right? There's real, there's real numbers out there on what we use. I use about 150,000 gallons a year. That's 15 gallons per square foot, per season. Not per day, per season is what my real-life numbers are. And they're maybe a little low, but, you know, I try and, you know, use my water as efficiently as possible. Adverse effects of surface water flows. They mention here that there's concern that most severe and prolonged drought conditions related to climate change further diminish summer stream flow rates in Northern California. Yet they say we should push all the cannabis indoors. What's that going to do for climate change? How much electricity is actively used? So if climate change is a real thing, if it is, maybe we should think about that. Maybe we should not cite it in our draft EIR and then make recommendations that would push things indoors and make that climate change worse. Because indoors, the plants still need water. That doesn't change. They don't need 17.4 gallons per day, per square foot. That would, that would drown rice. So I think this, this whole document where they cite themselves repeatedly on other draft EIRs, draft EIRs, not EIRs, draft EIRs, is fundamentally flawed, and it needs to go back, and I think somebody else needs to be put in charge of the whole program. We have a new funding director. From what I hear, she's very competent, and I think she'd do a great job.
That's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Save your heart for the night, Dan.
Now, I don't want the clock to run when the answers come, so save your answers for my questions, somebody three minutes are over, okay? I have no idea which one of you, because I'm too short to see up here, said something about smells. Have you looked at the studies about chemie versus organic? And what happens to smells before you put that in your report? Have you looked at alternatives such as BTE to reduce the use of water and to encourage you to choose wood in the county, particularly as dry as this place is? Are any of those things added to mitigate the problems this county has with water, the supposed smells, and so forth and so on? Now, dogs. Did you address possibly a leash law and that the cannabis growers be responsible for their trimmages and employees who bring dogs to this county? And that they provide vaccination certificates, rabies tags, and if they're going to be here more than 30 days, get a county tag. Contain them. I'm getting tired of rescuing small dogs stepped on the road so the coyotes can eat them when the trimmages decide to raid this county. I now have seven rescuers, and I shouldn't have to do this. And the county is overburdened with multiple litters of unwanted puppies that they take some of which in a box and dump outside that gate. Now, also, in the water thing, since I live in Barker Valley, where supposedly we have no water, so we can't have more than one house. How come somebody can now have three houses on seven acres and I can only have one house on 12 acres? Somebody can have some back one, two south of Bridge Road, has a single line, a dog kennel converted to housing, and just property and double wife. That's 30 plus seven acres. And also, the archaeological surveys. Did you consult any of the tribes? Because you sure didn't consult the ones I've worked with, and I've been the state and federal representative for several of them. Shotgun doesn't work. Those folks were stupid. They didn't live in the gray pines, ponderosa pines, and duck fir. They lived in relatively cleared area, more likely by oak, and with shallow access to the creeks, not the canyons like Barker Creek is. Maybe down by a ridge, anybody knows where he is? Where you can walk down to the water. Yes, everybody has to have an archaeological survey done. When Sierra Pacific clear cut everything, there's nothing left. I don't think they clear cut all the oak grove, they've clear cut the second grove, and they're working on third. So what in the world could possibly be left?
That's your three minutes, thank you very much. Please save your love.
Can I speak without that? I've got a good sergeant for you.
It's really for the recording.
Well, you'll hear it anyway.
You can put it on the stand, we'll capture that.
All right. Yeah, I am too. Well, good evening, I'm here, I'm Joseph Bauer. I'm here for myself and for safe alternatives for our forest environment. Our concern with the whole cannabis thing is damage to the environment, which is well documented in the, in the EIR and in your staff report, although I think it's understated. But what's being proposed is not going to cure the environmental problems that we have here. This program is so narrow that it's like a waste of money and a waste of time to pursue the avenue that we're on. What I really think we need to do here is to remove the cap. Anybody that wants to get a license and can qualify should be able to get a license. And presently, you're only, you're limiting the licenses to about, somewhere around 8% or 10% of the growers in the county? Well, you're responsible for land use in the whole county. And all the other permits that are required by the county are all land use things. So why is it that in this instance, you only want to consider 10% of the growers at the most and let all the other growers shut them out of the program? They have to be outlaws and black market growers forever, and consequently, they have no incentive to clean up their act if they're the ones creating the problems. And I'll tell you, it's the ones that are not licensed is where the problems are. So I think the EIR and the board of supervisors needs to back up in this issue and add another alternative. And that would be an alternative that would take the cap off, give everybody a specified period of time to come in, pay their fees, get a provisional license. That way, the county would have some money to do enforcement, because the majority of people still won't come. The other piece of that needs to be like Humboldt County has done. If you're in, if you're not in compliance with the land use laws, you get fined. Humboldt County is fineing non-compliant growers $10,000 a day. Humboldt County is fineing noncompliant growers ten thousand dollars a day. That seems pretty excessive. However, I think this county should have something if any of the other land use requirements are violated, they get fined. Why not this one? So give people a year to come in, pay their money, get a provisional license, and then you'll have money for enforcement and people will have some incentive to do it right. But presently, you're headed down a track that winds up, we still have all the same problems. Ten percent of the people regulated is not enough. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the comments. I don't have my comments.
Please leave it on the staff.
I'm just going to pass out five to you folks.
We're going to get to it tonight, but we will read it.
Well, I hope you will. I don't think you've seen comments yet, but I wanted to summarize our concerns and suggestions.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
I'm Mr. Chris Hayfork. I just wanted, before I say anything, to remind you that everybody's in your house tonight. This is your house. I'm not going to pretend that I can read this whole document and understand everything in it. In fact, probably don't understand anything in it. But luckily, I'm surrounding myself with people that do understand it, are better than I ever will in my entire life, thanks to it. It's crazy. This isn't the reality that we live in. This isn't, this document isn't the place that we live here. As you can see, I'm super dirty. It's from probably a hundred seventy-four thousand gallons of water today. I'll have to do that tomorrow, the next day, all season. Since the beginning of licensing and all this, there has been no reality. I thought I stood up and said this to the same group of people so many times. Like, let's get back in reality. Let's be here, you know? I leaned into one of the officers at the state of the night earlier and I said, "The only thing that could be possibly more frustrating than sitting through this meeting would be being tasked with code enforcement in this county all of a sudden." It's crazy. I think that this document needs to go away. I think that we need to look at the real reality of it. We're talking about a cumulative canopy here of, I believe, less than ten percent of my wife's property. This is insanity. You're talking about like cutting off licensing to anybody else in the Hayfork Valley. I totally understand what you understand about maybe we don't want all the growers in one place. From a business standpoint, I can totally afford to move a grow to Lewiston. It's fairly reasonable right now. To Trinity Center, property's super cheap, there's great sound, they have good temperature swings, we can kill it. I think we can hit that boat right there, very quick. But I would love to see, even if everybody was against it, there's people who are against this whole program, who have made more money than I could ever dream of growing, loaning money to illegal growers in their watershed. And there's people talking about this program who have sold their properties recently to illegal growers for exorbitant amounts of money. And I get it, you gotta look out for your family, you gotta look out for yourself. I get it, better than a lot of people at this point living in this county. But we can't just sit here and ignore everything that's going on out there and the last person to say cut down on licensed grows. But you can't sit here and say there's not going to be any more licensing. There's not going to be any hope for like, hey, let's work on a real facility or real business. This doesn't happen overnight. You know, the things that are going to bring money to this community or keep jobs in this community take time. They take years to build. Nobody here that has a business on this board had it overnight. Nobody built it to where they are overnight. We need time to do this and we've been sold this bill of goods that's not true time and time again of, hey, just pass this right now. We'll be able to amend it later. We'll be able to fix it later. We haven't amended or fixed anything. We're still sitting here like, are we going to be able to grow weed next year? Are we going to be able to do this? Which boils down to every grower in this room is sitting here going, is next year going to be the year that I don't think I made the worst decision of my career signing up this?
Thank you, sir. Please save your heart.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Steve Roadhouse, and I wanted to bring up the subject that Mr. Holt had talked about in relation to opting out and that it was not identified in the staff report. Where it is, I don't know, but I wanted to reiterate that it's an important aspect. In the original draft environmental impact report on page eighteen of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five, ES number six, it says locations should be identified. Although they haven't been necessarily the subject of conversations on a regular basis, I want to bring it to your attention once again that there are certain high-density populated areas where over seventy percent of the residents have signed, owners, not just residents, owners have signed, and there's always a twenty-five percent that don't even pay attention. So it's very critical in that sense of a threshold of significance, as you spoke of, that these locations that are appropriate or not be identified. So I'm really just speaking out the opportunity to opt out certain areas and that that be included as an amendment to the existing ordinance. That's the fact of the matter, the simplicity of it. Because, you know, there's a majority of people that would like to live in an area without it, and being indiscriminate about where it is affects many people. I understand it's going to be here, and that's fine. We're talking about certain high-density populated areas where there's a majority of children that would prefer living like that. That's what needs to be added as an amendment to the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm afraid of this thing. My name's Tom Sanders. Good evening to all. And reading on page five, item five, traffic concern. The DEIR identified significant operational traffic impacts for kids with three and two ninety-nine under cumulative conditions during peak part of the season. It goes on, and the DEIR does identify potential roadway and access issues that could result in safety impacts. As I understand it, the mitigation measure three fourteen point three requires documentation showing the site access as in compliance of chapter twelve dot ten, design policies of Trinity County Code of Ordinances. Now, I'm familiar with that ordinance, but to describe my personal situation, my property is accessed off highway three on a private, single-lane road with no turns that is six hundred and sixty feet long. At the end of that road is an adjacent property. I go up to the upper part of my property. The grow that was occurring there was all in water, mung soil, workers' traffic and everything else. This was dust, this was noise, this is shale road, shale dust does contain asbestos, county knows that. And the noise, the dust, and we walk on a road, people don't respect seed, and it's been just really a nightmare that finally has been mitigated by planning. So I go back to the reference of what is it in the design policies of Trinity County Code of Ordinances that would allow a commercial activity with that kind of frequency of traffic to occur in a rural residential neighborhood with a road that's on private property? They have access to the road by deed, that's true. I maintain the road, and it's been very frustrating, not to mention detrimental to my mental state of being and my life and my neighbors. So I just wanted to bring that up as a reference to consider in the EIR, and if not in the EIR, for the modification of the ordinance much next considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I have two subject matters I want to touch upon. One, as I brought it up earlier when we had a meeting a few months ago, was the hard cap on the South Fork Trinity River priority watershed. And the reasoning was, I'm not really sure. It still wasn't really clear to me what that reason was. I'm on the South Fork Trinity watershed, and my water is hydraulically connected to the river, and the water board has ordered me to draw water in the winter time for storage to use in the summertime. So it's no effects on the river during summertime. And they also mandate the river has to be at certain minimum levels before I can even draw water in the winter time. So that alleviates any drop years. If it's below that level, I can't draw water. And so that hard cap they have based on the priority watershed, I just still don't understand that. The second item is, I think on the second screen that they had on the presentation said that the EIR does not require denial of permits, and yet with, for growing in a flood plain, their mitigation, their mitigating measure is don't allow. There's no, there's nothing in there, why don't you allow for, because all flood plains aren't equal, why don't you allow for a hydrologist to go in there and certify that there won't be any damage during flood season? Because right now you are denying permits in flood plains, which are rego in the state of California for agriculture. And so I understand there are buildings, there are structures that might change the flow of the river, but if there isn't, you still just have a blanket deny. And so I just want to push back a little bit by saying you don't deny, you can't acquire denies, and yet you say that the only mitigating measure we have for flood plains is denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Marie Peterson. I wanted to read my comment from last time, and no, all of you, I didn't actually hear it. I think it's really important, and you touched on this question already. I feel like we haven't actually gotten a straight answer on it yet from the consultants. And so I'm actually going to quote a document, part of a document that was actually published and co-authored by Gary Jacobs of Ascent. It's regarding the Lotus versus Department of Transportation decision from May of two thousand fourteen. The document says, "If an environmental protection feature modifies physical elements of a project as expressed in its site plan or design, we believe that it is permissible to include that feature as part of the project description. Therefore, the significance determination would take into account the environmental protection afforded by that feature." And so when I asked the consultants last time if they could speak to whether water board enrollment as a prerequisite to county and state licensing would be appropriate to consider as part of the project description or as a mitigation when analyzing project impacts, the consultant actually just regurgitated parts of the paper which I had already read, that he wouldn't speak to my question. And if you look at the state EIR document for Cal Cannabis Licensing Program, you'll see that they actually do use water board regulations and enrollment in the, as like front-loaded into the project description. And then as a result of that, they find some of these impacts to be less than significant rather than significant with a lot of mitigations on the backend. And I also do think that the document is fundamentally flawed because they failed to analyze a wide range of alternatives, as you're supposed to with CECL. The range of alternatives is so narrow, and really, we should have an alternative that allows for lifting the cap and using pre, making it pre-existing cultivation sites only or places that are on agricultural lands or maybe have a CUP to get that license. But we, right now, it's not environmentally superior, even if we cut it down to two hundred and eighty licenses to keep on allowing new cultivation sites in. So those are my comments, and I really feel that the document should be recirculated with that new alternative.
All right, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Carla Habia. I'm from High and Palm, and I have a state annual renewable license with California cannabis. I am a licensed farmer, and I have been in the program since two thousand and sixteen. I am on the South Fork Trinity River, and I am on a rainwater attachment system where a hundred percent of my irrigation all season long comes from rainwater attachment. We don't touch a drop of soot and water for any of this on our property. I don't understand why you're putting a hard cap. Other people have mentioned this comment, and I know you don't want us to repeat comments. This is really important. We really want to fix these problems, and we can give a lot of power to do it. I don't believe that your document is, I don't believe that your collection and body of evidence is sufficient. I think it is not reasonably aligned with any of what is actually realistic for the participants in this program who you are gravitating to EIR for. I also think that the program, the EIR draft is fundamentally flawed. I feel that you have cherry picked from random sources in order to achieve a certain predetermined outcome and that you are not considering the actual superior environmental alternatives. So I really want to stress that we can't let down on this. I mean, really, we are testing all of these commissioners and insist on a rewrite. I just, I've read a lot of these documents. I have three and allergy. I consider myself an expert in cannabis cultivation. I don't feel, well, with all due respect, that you have a large qualification, that you have an expertise in methodologies of agriculture, particularly of cannabis cultivation, in order to really inform your research or your objectives in the highest manner.
Thank you.
Hello, all. My name is Matty Johnson of Down River Consulting. First of all, I'd like to say that based on some of the points that I'm about to raise and some of the points that were raised before me, that all of this document, potentially portions of this document, are fundamentally flawed and that that warrants a circulation of all, if not of all, of this document, if, if not portions. Further, mitigation measure three point one dash C, the renewable diesel requirement on construction equipment, I'm wondering if the consultants are aware of where the nearest facility is to actually get that renewable diesel? Secondly, mitigation measure three point three dash three, the mitigation measure that recommends moving cannabis indoors, I'm wondering if the consultants reviewed CDFA requirements, because this invokes three serious violations, one moderate violation, and one minor violation based on CDFA regulations. Thirdly, demonstrating water compliance, water resource standards in regards to access requirements, the recommendation is to abide by the five county salmonoid conservation road maintenance manual, and the general order actually references a PWA handbook. Wondering if the county should align with that handbook? Wondering if the county should align with that handbook in accordance with the general order? And lastly, there's a mitigation measure that seems to give the county the authority to enforce water resource standards in the general order. I'm wondering if that would be considered an expansion of the power? And regarding the current resources of the county, I do not think that that is a responsible recommendation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Letton, Dublin City. I've got a question, and it takes a long time to answer the question. I hope it doesn't take too much time, but that's okay, you share. The question is, what's the relationship between the points that were raised in the public input, which had a deadline in July, and the subjects that are discussed in the summary of key environmental issues? Or put it another way, if somebody here raised the point in their written comment in July, and it's not mentioned in these key subjects, does that mean that it's not going to have any impact on the final product? Someone?
At the commission's, what would you like? We don't have a microphone at the moment, so for the record, I suppose.
You don't need one.
No, for the record, honestly, for the video.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Would you like us to talk?
Yes, because that's a kind of question we have in all there. Well, the down to seven, I guess. Don't touch it.
Okay, you heard, yeah, it was you. Okay. The point of the key issues were those were the key substantive issues that we identified. There are several comments in the document. All comments that are received in the draft EIR during that period are responded to and written as part of the final EIR. So they are going to be responded to. We wanted to highlight the substantive items for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I knew that we were entitled to get written responses to our comments. That's a given. I'm just asking if there's a relationship between the key elements that are highlighted in this summary, and not, the comment not being, having any impact in the final product?
I think he answered that.
It will be in the final EIR, yes.
In the final EIR, not just the written response to the comment?
Depending on what the comment.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be teething.
No, 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 no.
There were, as we held, a lot of comments submitted. And I just feel like the people who submitted comments should know whether or not their comments want to be ignored. Perhaps because of the lack of merit, or addressed in the final product. And the simple answer is this, each comment gets responded to. Those that have, as I mentioned in the presentation, there were some very good comments, for example, on some of the technical issues. Water was one, that we've looked at, and we have concurred with what's been provided. And so we're revising that piece of the analysis. So whatever we agree, and we intend to need to change EIR, that's going to be reflected in the final EIR. There are some comments, for example, you see, that people just express, "I don't like cannabis." Not really an issue, EIR talks about someone's personal opinion. So we acknowledge the comment, we say thank you for the comment, but it doesn't change the environmental analysis. Does that help? Well, yeah, and I think we're going to have to let that go.
So too.
Sorry, Mr. Letton, you go ahead with your comments. Okay, thanks. And I'm sorry if I'm not raising a question while I'm up. With regard to the baseline, I just got a couple of comments, and I'm not really pushing or pulling one direction or the other. But we know that the CECL guidelines say that the baseline is normally, the date of the notice of project, the NOP, and also generally, it's that. Well, normally and generally means that, not always. And I think we may be in a situation of the not always. Because we're talking about reenactment of ordinances that, for the most part, were first enacted in the fall of 2016. And we had a laboratory experiment with those ordinances of two and a half years, almost three years. Why not look at the information that reflects the impact of those ordinances during that period of time, rather than saying the baseline is December 2018? Why not interview the people who are the growers, the people who have made complaints? I've got a file hold at home. I'm sure the planning department does too, the commission as well. And read the responses to those complaints. We've got real information available as to the impact of those ordinances. But yet, we're putting it into a theoretical structure and saying, "Well, we're going to look at 2018, that's the baseline, and we're going to forecast what the impacts will be." Why not use experience? You've got empirical evidence. With regard to traffic, the way I read the DEIR, it referred to 299, it referred to 3, and that's it. And I urge you to consider, as I'm sure many comments did, the fact that there are many thousands of parcels in Trinity County that are serviced by private roads. To say that, "Oh, don't worry about those. Those are all taken care of by road maintenance agreements of the county." That's not reality. Talk to the people who live in these places. With regard to dogs barking, I suggest that, if you're going to refer to county codes, and the general plan is having some restrictions, then just say, as somebody else said, and I think it may have been Jake, that a violation of those provisions can result in a suspension or revocation of a license. Put some teeth in it. There are other instances, and I'm sorry, I don't know, can't remember them off the top of my head, who refer to the regulations of other bodies as taking care of the problem, but don't go the next step and say that a mitigation would be, a violation of those rules will result in revocation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Could I still hand it to the third, or hey, I have a right to be the last? Do you want to get, take these comments?
Yeah, I have some written comments that are different than my public comments. I'm just, I'm from Hayport. I think it's unusual that we're going to do CECL comments in three minutes, because I've got more than three minutes to talk about. So I think that we don't have effective amount of time to adequately comment on the EIR here today. And essentially, this process is being set up right now. So we're going to be limiting our comments. And they're again, going to try and limit public input, essentially. Okay? So just everyone's on the same page. I'm also an expert cannabis cultivator. Been doing it for a long time, almost 20 years. And I'm also an expert cannabis, a policy expert for cannabis. And since we started this process in 2015, I've read almost every draft, proposal, emergency regulation, everything. And I'm here to tell you, as an expert in cultivation and policy for cannabis, this document is fundamentally flawed. And it's full of erroneous data and assumptions that would make your head spin if you knew what they were talking about in real life. I read it, and I think I'm in a parallel world, Frank. Okay? I'm not really allowed to talk about a lot of the other details, because I've already submitted comments to them about the deficiencies in the thing in the draft. But what I will say is that, in 2016 and 17, the board of supervisors told us that we were going to limit licenses to 500 until CECL analysis told us that we could adjust it upward. If CECL said we could. They never considered it in the analysis. They never considered raising our cap. And we're almost at 500. We're going to be there soon. And when we do, are we going to do this again? And that's not necessary. So we need an alternative that not only raises the cap to 500, but I think we can capture a lot of opportunity to bring in everybody else who doesn't get regulated by acknowledging that enforcement actions have environmental consequences. And there is a possible, reasonable possibility that those impacts from enforcement actions will have a negative impact on the environment. They should be, they are not CECL exempted, and they should be part of this analysis. Most of the funds for the cannabis program go toward enforcement. They are part of the project. We would not have ordinance in this county if we did not have enforcement with it. That's the bottom line. Now, I've been here the whole time. We would have never got any of these ordinances, anything cannabis-related, if they're not an enforcement mechanism. And it's not our fault that there is no enforcement through years, because we had the corrupt sheriff at the time. And I hate to talk like this, but we've got to be honest about the situation here. I don't even want to start, I'm probably running out of time, but I always thought that this would be more science-based. But it turns out it's more pseudoscience. And in a real scientific environment, we're going to go a peer review of the information. But it turns out that a lot of information's not even available to us. I looked at the references, this is page ink one of the draft EIR. The number, chapter number two, the first one is "The Center Environmental in the References." "Technical Memorandum from Trinity County Commercial Cannabis Development and Operation Assumptions." That's where all these crazy assumptions in the draft come from. We've never seen that. I would like to see that from the lead agency. We need to see all the non-publicly available information in the references. Just so everyone knows, the references on the first page, Trinity County is listed on the front page of the references. But every other page after, on the references, it says Yolo County. Now, that's because they use this as a template from their past work incentive. That's the one that would explain it. Are we at three minutes?
Yep.
You are.
All right, well, please read my comments. I have exhaustive comments that lay out the real project before us, please. I really, the commissioners need to send a resolution to the board of supervisors, saying you have no confidence in this document. Please tell them to stop that.
I feel like I'm following Hendricks after following Justin. My name is Julia Rubick, I'm from Hayport. I am not a cannabis expert, but I'm a market research and analysis expert. It's a very different type of research from the research that you guys have done today. But I can empathize and sympathize with what it's like to be rushed. So my comment's going to be kind of short. I just want to point out that we heard three times today that this was a rushed research project, and that it could have been better. And so that, to me, is incredibly important to note, because this is an important document. That is going to affect a lot of people, it's going to affect our environment. So why would we rush it? I also heard an unfortunate comment that our defense, that we might not be understanding it because we didn't read it, which I've used in the past when I've had rushed projects. I'm embarrassed of how to say that. But I also question, there's so many examples where this is flawed. We brought up some. In my past, when we've been rushed, I have cut corners, and again, embarrassed to say this, by not going into the field and doing the field research to support, by actually seeing the traffic go by, parking time, stopping every 20 cars, finding out, is this related to cannabis? Is it legal? Is it illegal? You know, some of the comments we had around water tonight. There's so many things that it feels like we may have been cut to get to the point from the flawed. I completely appreciate the honesty in saying that it was rushed. But again, I want to find out that the people who created support did say that it could have been better. Thank you.
Greetings, my name is Brian Osman. I'm from Hayport and Mountain Cannabis Company. I've been a licensed cannabis grower for probably four years, had a state licensed medical collective, and then moved into the cultivation side of what we now have here in our county and in the state. I agree with John Letton and Julia. There needs to be more things like this. I mean, you know, all my cultivating peers, we know, I mean, we're able to grow cannabis, sell it on a public legal market. We're going to have to sausage this out. Technically, we're all on board with, you know, we're going to all have to come to an agreement. I'm slightly disappointed in the planning commission not seeing some of the eyeball-popping statistics in the documents, such as, and I don't know if there's a button in the EIR machine for trip generating assumptions, but it's saying that we in Trinity are going to have, in one month, 11,014 daily trips. And the simple math is, if there's 280 licenses, that's going to be 40 trips a day, when most of those license holders actually live and walk to work every day. You know, I would just, I would hope that, you know, it is a lot of paperwork, I would hope. It's the planning commission's job.
Let's show some respect for the other men, let them speak.
These guys go to you, goes to you, goes to board. You know, we're the kind of, we're the grassroots foundation. You guys need to listen to us, this is our thing. I don't know if any of you are cultivators. I don't know how much cannabis experience anyone over here has in their family members, or personally. But this is for us. And so hopefully, it doesn't just get dropped, or, you know, you guys are seeing some of these things that just stick out, that are super rational. And the threshold of significance definitely for the traffic is bulk, completely. So there's probably many other things that make this document quite flawed. And there's a lot of state regulation baseline that you guys could go through that would actually clear a lot of this up. So, yeah, I ask that this definitely, you know, we've been going at this for some time now, but, you know, we need to work on this a little more, because there's definitely some statistics that you need to, you need to get some grass-level knowledge on, that you can't just plug and chug numbers into that, you know, or are coming from other counties. Every county's different.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ryan Carbell, Hayport. I'm also a licensed cultivator. I'd like to thank everybody for all the time you spent on this. So basically, tonight, we're talking a lot about data versus assumptions. We don't need to make assumptions here. The data is here. I asked the planning commission to make sure that the data becomes public, and that we can look at it and assess this data. Obviously, they're using some, you know, safety factor in increasing, you know, what the actual data is many, many times, to create, you know, to cast this broad net for all the uses that might fall under this program. And I think specifically, we should be looking at the actual data, you know, within this program. Just one instance here, one assumption that they made. Outdoor cultivation building size, one acre. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. So let's actually look at the data here. It's all in front of us. There's over 300 licensed cultivators right now. And all the data is right here. So let's look at it and stop looking at assumptions. Thank you.
Evening, Fishers. John Brower from Junction City. And we've heard a lot tonight about the erroneous assumptions and the infeasible and impractical mitigation measures and overstated impacts that this document seems to be full of. But I want to talk for a minute about the front end of the document, and the means of addressing the project description in a thoughtful way that accurately describes the project. And the complete missing of the Water Board Order and Fish and Wildlife LSAA's, that are both required before you can even apply for a Trinity County permit. Those are part of the project descriptions. And it's one of the fundamental flaws of this document, is the backloading of those protective features as mitigation measures. It really should have been included in the very front of the document, in the project description. It is fundamentally flawed without it. And it's one of the reasons that you, I'm asking the commission, in your wisdom, you guys have your fingers on the pulse of your communities. guys have your fingers on the pulse of your communities, a lot of experience, so I'm, I'm asking you to send forth a recommendation to the supervisors that sends this thing back for a rewrite and recirculation. The staff report tonight says that the document can't be recirculated unless new, previously undisclosed, potentially significant or unavoidable impacts are discovered through the combat process. And that may be true, but the front end of the document is where these problems are. And a document can be sent back for redrafting, recirculation, based on being fundamentally flawed, and that's where these big flaws are, in the beginning of the document. So there's no way you can put junk in on the front end and expect to get something feasible and practical out the other end. So I ask you to please come up with a resolution that is a recommendation to the supervisors to send this thing back for a thorough rewrite and recirculation. They've got to get it right in the beginning of the document. And otherwise, we're wasting time here trying to turn a sow's ear into a silk purse. And we don't have a lot of time, we need to get this right. Thank you.
Good evening. Deidre Brower, also Junction City. We've heard a lot tonight about bad data being used in the document and all of these licenses paid for this document to be prepared. My company prepares lots of environmental documents that are all site-specific. If I were to, we were to prepare a report that had nothing to do with that site, that had to do with, you know, somebody down the road or in a totally different watershed and was irrelevant to that property, I couldn't recharge the client to prepare an accurate document. So it's clear that there needs to be some rework on this document, that I have a concern that everybody's gonna have to double pay when it should have been done right the first time and not with bad data used. So that's my concern. Thank you.
My name is Tom Building, Hayport. Well, a lot of good things have been said, so I'm not gonna re-comment on those, I just want to also say that, you know, we're relying on you to think about the future of Trinity County, you know, there's ways to help create a roadmap, and you have to decipher whether the data is good or not. This idea that because professional scientists put together data that may seem light or proper is, it's just an ignorant statement. There's all sorts of scientific studies that have been done, that have been flawed, that have been false because of people's own agendas and all sorts of things. Just look around. So, you know, I just want to talk to that. You guys are creating a roadmap for positive impact in Trinity County and us as a community of cannabis growers who want to be part of that. And you have to know what's reality and what's not. There's tons of numbers that were stated tonight that aren't even close. I felt like I at least had you have maybe a negative agenda on this because you're comparing growing with a cement plant. Doesn't make any sense. The truth is, on any five acre parcel, on a drought year of 24 inches a year, it's 10 acre feet a year, it's 3.3 million gallons of water. If I use 330,000 gallons and I capture it in winter, it's 10% of what's falling on my property in Trinity County. You know, numbers can be viewed and changed to create what kind of function and what you want to see happen, and, and they're used all the time in false, false ways and false stories, and, and I've seen that happen tonight in more than one instance, and the people that I trust, I haven't read the whole document, but I've heard plenty of statistics tonight that are already close. So I'm just asking you, as our leaders, you and the board, to, to help create a roadmap and to help decipher the crap from the real science.
Seems to be about the right distance. Evening, Mr. Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chair, Member of the Commission, Tom Aleco, W C. I have a lot of echoes to say about, about this document. I understand the difficulty in, you know, literally putting the cart before the horse. This is a project in motion. The ordinances that you're evaluating have been in place for years now, so that is definitely a difficult aspect. However, given that difficulty, there are advantages that come with that, and we should take advantage of the advantages. We don't have to speculate about a lot of this stuff. There's data, there's numbers, we know exactly how many gallons licenses used every year, so we all have to report it. That data exists, we don't need to guess. We know how much fertilizer gets used because we all have to report it. Planning has that data, if they don't have, they have access to that data. State has that data. A commenter mentioned about complaints that have been filed. We know what neighborhoods and where there are a large variety of complaints. So rather than the speculation, let, let's see this be a genuinely data-driven document. I do believe that entails taking that, reworking it, recirculating it. I know that is a lot of work, and I know that's gonna cause probably more expense, but when this started, we had a hard deadline of July 1st. That deadline's a date that I don't mean we should coast, but we should use the time the state's given us to make this a strong data-driven document. Thank you.
Zach Scott from Hayport. I consider myself a cannabis professional. I've been growing in Trinity County for over 10 years. I don't know how you could possibly write 8,000 pages on the environmental impacts of cannabis and not have a single cannabis farmer in your consult? Sure. Stage 71, there's not a cannabis consultant, there's not a former cannabis farmer, there's not a former cannabis trimmer. It's beyond me. And then to use yourself as your source, that's fraud. Like, come on. That's it.
Peter, oh, again, I'm entertaining with silence this time. I'm seeing a potential solution here that could work well, potentially for the body. And it really is exactly what this last gentleman was talking about, which is that there has been a non-involvement of the cannabis community in this whole document, and what I think, all growers certainly, and probably everyone would be happy to see, would be a committee established that was made up of members of the county and members of the cultivation community, and everybody sit down, not just two minutes apiece per person, but have some meaningful meetings with meaningful data input, and everybody sit down together, look at this whole thing, and try to come up with a solution that honestly is the best for people that don't grow, people that do grow, and us, all the county in general. That's what we're really looking for, and if only we have half of the people doing the work, then obviously, the results tend to be totally skewed. So please give that serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Robert Hicks. I've been here since 1978, and I moved here in a couple of years. They took down half of the mill and this and that. But I'm here to tell you and say, and that's that, we have an opportunity here to have an industry, a profound industry that will, that can impact this county amazingly. And so all I want to say is, don't grow.
Hi there, Dale Davis from Junction City. I'm a cultivator for over 20 years. Can't believe I had to sit through this. This is fundamentally wrong. The numbers that we're being, there's no way I could drive 40 times down my driveway when I have to put 174,000 gallons of water per square foot. There's no time, this isn't any part of reality, there's business involved. You guys invite these numbers, what does it even mean? You're talking about our environment. You guys have the audacity to come here and put this energy on this commission in this way is amazing. It's, like my friends say, fraud. It's fraudulent. This should be done, start over, I'm disgusted. It's nearly fraud. We're all listening to it here. Thank you for letting us for trying, let's start over.
I think we've reached the end. Oh, you know, you want one?
Mr. Chair. Yes, yes.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak after this?
And if we could take a break, just a small short break, that would be great.
Well, this is the last speaker. Anybody else that wants to speak out of this gentleman?
I'm not the greatest speaker, but I'm gonna try. So just from my own experience, I've known that bandaging an issue and being reactive instead of being proactive is not always the best thing. And clearly, there's issues on both sides of the road, in a pun intended, from both sides, um, kind of have some issues with his room and the neighbor who's on the other end of it. And clearly, people are still upset on both sides. And then when the fact becomes questionable and the authority that's supposed to be responsible quotes themselves, it kind of ties back to other kind of political examples of what's real or crazy, and it also ties to the data and theory, and kind of creates a separation of where's the single source of truth and in the environment where it's new and people are the pioneers, it's hard to have fidelity, and it just increases hostility and tension for people that are trying to do the right thing.
Thank you, Chair. All right, I think we've reached the end of the comments, so we'll post public comment and we're gonna take a 10-minute break. All right, everyone, thank you very much for your input. For those who submitted written comments, we will get those and we will study that. I'm looking forward to all the detail within those regarding those fundamental flaws of the document, and we'll study that as we step. The process we went through tonight was, as you may be aware, this is our very first meeting at the planning commission on the EIR, so we've got public input under X, written in, oral input. The next step in this process is that the board supervisor wants to have a meeting just like this one, the interview reveal, where they will hear directly from the public, also in more of a workshop or bad term, more of a, a public input forum rather than an action forum. And I'm lobbying that we're there too, and if that's a joint session, and if then staff will massage the document, it will come back to the planning commission for our review of it and ultimately taking action on it with respect to recommendations for the board to consider. I'm told that they're trying, that they'd like of the board meeting in October, date to be determined, and, and board agenda and scheduling, you know, to be factored in. So we don't have the date on that yet, but it will be announced in the paper, it will be on the board's website as to when that meeting will happen, for, what was it called tonight? A discussion of the draft EIR.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. It was originally, it was originally going to be next week, did that get canceled? Okay.
Yeah. I haven't heard that date, but, so the date will be announced, it's not next week. But watch for that, we'll have another session, another opportunity here, the board will get to hear it directly from the public, both, and as soon as you see the notice, please submit your written comments ahead of time. Very difficult for us to do, anyone with it in real time, particularly in being inside, but we will read what was submitted tonight in advance of the next time we meet on this Commissioners, the last item under here was provide direction to staff. Is there anything in particular that we would like staff to consider for the next time we review this? This being our first shot at it tonight.
And for clarification, if I may, just that information that staff should convey to the board supervisors at their meeting when that does occur. And it was, October 1st was thrown out, it was mentioned at the September 11 sequel workshop. After that meeting, we realized that we wanted to take in what happened tonight and have time to evaluate that and incorporate that into the staff report for the board, and that turnaround wouldn't work. And so that's why that, that date kind of just went away.
So new date to be determined, and watch for that in the paper, as we all will be. Back to the sub-issues, is there any other than, I think, what you just said is the draft EIR. Roll up what we heard tonight, and there's a lot of commonalities in that input, and I think back to that into the next staff report that the board sees, and I would hope that that could be a joint session, so we would all hear the same input before we come back and take a shot at it for deliberations. Commissioners, anything else you'd love to say on the EIR or you want?
Will we get the comments that were presented before we leave tonight?
If there's enough copies, we can certainly take those. I think some of the comments submitted did have copies.
I believe they, I believe they all did.
Then, then, yes, then let's get those and take them.
Yeah, if we don't have enough copies, we'll, we'll also get these scanned in and get them tested. There's two, two sets of comments.
There were two sets.
There was another one, that was a single sheet or a single package, and I believe that was directly to the EIR, I'll have to process that before I can get that available, but we should discuss that, that process.
Okay, I think we need to get both available because they were presented in the commentary.
Okay, good, I'll just need to make copies of them. Perfect.
All right then, we'll plug.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I know it is premature to make kind of recommendations or any drastic measures, but is this the conclusion of the meeting? I mean, what, what is the outcome of what we've heard tonight? And it seems a little anticlimactic, and that's okay, but I just want to clarify what, what have we achieved tonight and what, what is the direction to staff as it's written here in the staff report, other than, as Commissioner Stewart said, provide the written comments that was given?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ford, if I can jump in on that. I think the outcome of tonight was to provide what we just observed, which is to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on a document that thus far has only been distributed and printed, and to hear what people have to say. So staff has heard everything that most have had to say, staff also heard your, your questions early on, and so I think staff now has a good sense of what we need to do when we go to the board, and what are the issues that the
of what we need to do when we go to the board and what are the issues that the board will want to hear. Staff will report on all of the things that we heard tonight and incorporate that into their presentation. And obviously, folks who were here tonight can come to that meeting as well. If there is a specific message that you want the board to know, in other words, just after you sat here as a commissioner and heard what you heard or based on your own review or EIR or on the questions that were asked before public comment, if there are specific messages that you individually as a commissioner would like the board to know, then perhaps go ahead and state those so that staff can, in their presentation to the board, in their staff report, make sure that those thoughts are conveyed.
Yes, I would like to make this statement in effect. Uh, I would like, uh, I would like to make the following statement, a recommendation on my personal, for my own person. I would like a recommendation to the board to not support the draft EIR as it is written based on the following three. Number one, the fact, the fact that the EIR as it stands fails to take into account the project description, uh, in the project description, the previously established mitigation measures, which would render some of the impacts less than significant. Number two, the cannabis operational assumptions are completely overstated and do not accurately reflect the real operation conditions within Trinity County. And third, that some of the project determinations of significant impacts do not state quantitative thresholds of significance and appear to be subjective in nature. How would you feel? Thank you.
I would like to make sure that the board hears that. I feel that a lot of the, the data that has been collected is, is, to use an overworked word, flawed, and, um, really does not reflect the reality of cannabis growing in Trinity County. Probably not anyplace, but certainly not in Trinity County. And, um, and I think it needs to be looked at more carefully, and I think that the data needs to be collected from people in Trinity County who know what, um, what the correct and significant amounts are. There needs to be some, some influence from, from the cannabis community itself and not just from other counties and from the consultants.
So the comment, um, the commission making about submitting timely written comments for these meetings, uh, ahead of the meeting instead of bringing them to the meeting, it would make it easier to get it in front of us and us to actually read, you know, the report before the meetings. I would encourage that, um, for the board meeting.
Do you want to stand up for my email? Yes, please, absolutely. Thank you.
So staff, I think that's the input from the commission, and we'll see you at the next meeting on the EIR. So we'll close that item. Next item is the planning director's report.
Only one item, uh, briefly, and that is we have no items on the agenda for October 10th, and wish to cancel the meeting.
So cancel.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we are adjourned.